I don't ever use it. I have this color. If you have, you ever seen me speaking? I have a blue pen in my hand. I think so.
We will now reconvene the public session of the Salem Kaiser School Board. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, all board members are present this evening. There has been a change in the agenda, and it's item 8B, the MOU, with Mountain West and C-Tech. I also have an announcement to make this evening, and I know there's some people anxious to have input on the boundary decisions. And I want to assure you that you will have a chance, but it can't be, it won't be until the next meeting, the 22nd, and the following meeting in February after that. And I will be honest with you, it's because we haven't received the materials yet as a board. And we want to read over the materials on each area and be very fluent on them before we take public input. But I can assure you, you will be given an opportunity prior to the decision being made. And I hope it isn't too inconvenient for you, and you can make one of the next two Now we have the spotlights, and our superintendent will present those.
All right, our first spotlight will be presented by Jim Orth, our interim assistant superintendent.
Superintendent Perry, Chair Goss, and other directors of the board, I'm pleased to announce one of the spotlights of the month is the C-Tech Law Enforcement Program. If you could come up.
Right here. Three rows, tallest in the back.
So one of the Career Technical Education Center's newest programs is doing more than just starting coursework this year. Students in C-Tech's new law enforcement program got out of the classroom and spent time last month volunteering in our community. C-Tech teacher Donna Duvall says being part of, being in law enforcement is working actively in the community, so it's important that students get involved early in volunteer opportunities to begin this critical part of their education. More than 60 students worked at the Marion Polk Food Share Warehouse over two days on December 20th and 21st. Students repacked frozen vegetables into family-sized portions, helping prepare more than 5,000 meals for families in need in our community. They also cleaned up a large freezer at the warehouse and a back room. In another volunteer role, the students participated on December 15th as actors for the Salem Police Department SWAT and Mobile Response Team Training Drill. Students enrolled in the law enforcement program work with certified law enforcement professionals in our community. They examine state and federal laws and their critical roles in police corrections and rehabilitation in the criminal justice system. Students also strengthen their minds and bodies through rigorous mental and physical training, including advanced self-defense tactics. The new law enforcement program is led by criminal justice teacher Josh Barnett, public safety teacher Jake Fineran, English and Social Studies teacher Donna Duvall, and instructional assistant Enoch Humley. Thank you, C-Tech Law Enforcement Program students, for getting involved in our community, and congratulations on being recognized as our Volunteers of the Month for January 2019.
All right, our next spotlight will be presented by Larry Ramirez, our Director of High Schools.
Good evening, everyone. If I can have McNary Senior Angel Olmos Lopez come forward, and Principal Jespersen. And I think we have also maybe a member from the Kaiser Library. If you're here as well, we'd love to have you up front. McNary High School Senior Angel Olmos Lopez is a National Honor Society student and is the co-president of the Celtics Garden Club. He hopes to attend Oregon State University next fall and plans to study engineering. Along with being an exemplary student at McNary, we're recognizing Angel because he's on the board member of the Kaiser Community Library. He was recently profiled in a feature article in the Kaiser Times. Angel says he's been passionate about reading ever since his childhood. Last summer, when he was looking for volunteer opportunities in the community, he decided to work at the Kaiser Community Library because of his love for books. After he began volunteering at the library, Angel says the library staff noticed that he really wanted to help out, so they offered him a new student position on the library board. Angel says it's been a pleasure to help out visitors to the library and to see people's faces light up when he gives them a hand. Angel's parents are the owners of the Fortaleza Bakery in Kaiser, where he's been working as a cashier since middle school. He says it taught him the value of hard work and the importance of customer service. Congratulations to Angel on being recognized tonight for giving back to the Kaiser community.
All right, our last spotlight is a special spotlight award, and Linda, our Community Resource Specialist, is going to come forward with some students from Hoover Elementary a picture, our students would love to get in the picture with you. School. Come on up, students.
This one's for you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
And if we had internet tonight, they have created a special video for you that is now I think they have individual gifts.
They do, yes. We'll start here. Board member three.
Thank you.
posted on our Facebook, but we can't get internet here.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm so excited.
They do.
Wow, that is so awesome.
Should you guys meet these?
Thank you very much.
Right here.
Here's Jesse's.
This man's.
Thank you so much.
Don't worry, we're going to get your picture with them in a minute.
Nice try.
And so they, I think in the video, it talks about the job of a school board member. Did you want to say a few words?
Yes, real quick. So I wanted to give you guys just a little bit of background history on where the posters came from. Hoover Elementary established hound clubs last school year. Hound clubs consist of a classroom teacher, specialist, music, PE counselor, and our behavior specialist. Even our principal has her own hound club. Each group has about 15 to 17 students from all grades, kinder through fifth grade. Hound clubs were formed to give our students the opportunity to create a bond with other Hoover staff members and students in other grades. For the month of November, our hound clubs focused on gratitude, giving thanks to all of our community partners and community volunteers. Our students decorated these posters for you as their way of showing gratitude for your countless volunteer hours and for making Salem Kaiser a great place to learn.
I'm going to let you go get a picture with them. January is School Board Appreciation Month, and so tonight, we'd like to recognize the qualities that make Salem Kaiser Board Directors such an important part of our community. So each school board members are elected by local voters to serve a four-year term without pay. Even though each director represents a zone in our district, the entire board works together to serve all students in Salem and Kaiser. So I asked my members of my executive team to share their thoughts about our board. So here are some things they had to say. Director of Human Resources, John Bate, says he appreciates Paul Kylo's willingness to engage deeply in problem-solving and to consider and understand multiple points of view. Director Kylo has passion and caring for students and the education they receive. He also has a great sense of humor. Assistant Superintendent Orth says Chuck Lee cares deeply about both the Salem and the Kaiser, wait, the Kaiser and the Salem communities, and knows, I know, I got it, and knows almost everyone in both towns. He would love to change the name of Salem Kaiser School District to Kaiser Salem School District, and he is a strong advocate for career and technical education programs. He, it would, our Career Technical Education Center would not be what it is today without his vision, enthusiasm, networking, and fundraising. Director of Academic Achievement Linda Myers appreciates Marty Hyon's student-centered vision. Director Hyon often asks questions or has comments on issues from a student's perspective. She doesn't shy away from asking hard questions or asking for more information or clarification before making a decision. Your heart is evident in your work. Director of Academic Achievement Craig Spruels says Jesse Lippold is constantly out in the community and in schools so he can effectively advocate for families. Director Lippold's advocacy for the Native American and Native Alaskan communities is much appreciated, and his optimism and positive spirit is also an inspiration. And it was noted that he is great at reading resolutions. Chief Operations Officer Michael Wolf appreciates Jim Green's strong, consistent, and pragmatic leadership that has provided reassurance and stability through some of the most difficult periods in the history of the district. Director Green's exceptional statewide network and leadership benefit the entire state, but most importantly, benefit us and our students. Lilian Govis, our Director of Communications, says about Sharon, you are a passionate advocate for all of our students, embracing the equity lens and championing underserved populations with the mindset that the time is always right to do what is right. Vice Board Chair Blossi is an excellent walker, as exhibited by all the doors she knocked on personally during the 2018 bond measure. And to conclude, I'd like to share a few things myself about the many contributions of our board chair, Kathy Goss. Kathy shares plans for board meetings carefully and cares about the people that show up to engage. Chair Goss isn't afraid to disagree, but supports decisions of the board and always allows for a healthy dialogue in the boardroom. She cares deeply about students and especially about their emotional health. Thank you to the Board of the Directors for your tireless work for our students, family, and our community. If the audience could please just join me in showing your appreciation for our school board.
As much as I'd like that to go on for the rest of the evening, we do have to go back to action items. There are none on the agenda this evening. So we go to the consent calendar. Board members, does anyone wish to pull an item?
No, I move adoption of the consent calendar, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second. Thank you. From the consent item, or the consent calendar, we'll go on to. Oh, sorry about that. We need to call for a vote. Do we have a motion? We did have a motion from Director Green. There was a second. Is there any further discussion? Nope. Okay, seeing no more discussion, we'll now vote. All those in favor of the consent calendar as is, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those not in that frame of mind, by saying nay. The vote passes. What did I do? Oh, I skipped it. No, I changed its order.
Yeah, you did, purposely.
We do have a place on our agenda for public comment, and this particular public comment occurs twice. The first one in the agenda is the one we'll be addressing now, and that's to come up and discuss anything you wish that appears on the agenda. There is another consent after we've finished where you are allowed to speak on anything. So.
Alice's got it for you.
Oh, my gosh. First on the agenda is Tyler, help me out, Tyler.
Skele Lakeburg. Good evening, Board Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, and other members of the board. My name is Tyler Skele Lakeburg, and I reside in Salem, Oregon. I'm speaking tonight as the Vice President for SKEA, the Salem Kaiser Education Association, on behalf of my 2,300 members. SKE wants to applaud the district for creating the Office of Behavioral Learning. We recognize the efforts of David Fender and his team and the positive impact of real change in our schools. However, I want the board to realize that these efforts are just drops in a very large bucket. We are still in a crisis with extreme behaviors going on in our schools. Every day in Salem Kaiser, we have many classrooms that are cleared, teachers, and classified staff that are kicked, hit, bitten, spit on, or worse, by students. Every day, we have talented educators rethinking, is this a job for them? I have spoke to many members that tell me they love what they do, they love teaching, but they can't take much more of these behaviors. Again, the Office of Behavioral Learning is doing incredible, wonderful work, but we need these efforts doubled, tripled, quadrupled to turn back the growing tide of these extreme behaviors. We also need smaller class sizes, more case managers, counselors, support staff. We need more. But the big thing is, we also recognize that we are operating on very limited resources. They are spread thin. We understand that. So I ask you, the board, along with the confidential employees, our administrators, licensed, and classified staff, to join us on February 14th, excuse me, February 18th, not Valentine's Day, as we march for our students. Come join us for a rally at the Capitol, being joined by educators from across the state. We also ask that this board consider adopting a resolution in which you have a template copy of, to continue placing an urgency for this need of adequate funding upon our state. Approximately 80% of Oregonians do not currently have a child in our schools. So that means we have many Oregonians that don't understand these needs. Our schools are not the schools of 30 years ago, or 10, or even five years ago. The number of students coming in with ACEs and other trauma is growing at alarming rate. Class size is increasing, feeding more into these behavioral issues. We need all of Oregonians to understand what our schools are facing and help us together to meet the needs of our students. We want to work with you to create a real fix in addressing these needs, and not just small drops in a bucket, but want to fill up that bucket. So this starts with stating publicly that we need more funding in a resolution statement and your support on February 18th. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tyler. Okay, we have some readings this evening, and Superintendent Perry.
All right, our first reading is on Resolution Number 201819-4, authorizing agreement of a request from the City of Salem to the Salem Kaiser School District taxing District. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Chief Operations Officer, Michael Wolf.
Good night, Chair, good night. We're not there yet, but we're heading that direction. Let's start over. Good evening, Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, members of the board. Tonight, you have a first reading of a resolution authorizing agreement of a request from the City of Salem to the Salem Kaiser taxing District. Last November, you have in your packet a letter from Mayor Bennett requesting board support for the courtyard apartments to receive a tax incentive, which is really a tax exemption for up to 10 years, under the city's multiple-unit housing program. The project is located on 211 Court Street, which right as, it's really on the corner of Court and Front, looking out over Riverfront Park. And the applicant is M. Parkside Living LLC, and they're building two buildings, a almost 43,000-square-foot residential apartment building containing 40 units, and a smaller, little over 2,000 square feet, 2,300 square foot, commercial building, and 40 parking spaces. It's important to note that pursuant under ORS 307606, that the, any taxing jurisdiction that has the authority to issue an exemption, such as the city, there needs to be 51% of the taxing jurisdictions that agree, so that there's the full tax exemption or tax abatement. And so the city represents 29% of the taxing jurisdiction, and the district represents 23. So the city is formally, they've already unanimously approved this project for the tax exemption, and they're requesting that the board actually consider by resolution agreeing with the inclusion of this project in the tax exemption program. And so that's the first reading tonight, and we'll take action next month on this. Any questions?
Director Kylo? Director Kylo?
This, we do have Board Governance Policy 13, which impacts this. So after tonight, you'll be contacting the other jurisdictions? That's one of the provisions of our policy, which goes beyond what the law requires.
Right, I appreciate that. So the interesting, so there's a slight nuance to this one, and we'll have to go back and take a look to make sure, but the BG 13, I believe, is dealing with low-income tax exemptions, low-income housing. This isn't that, but it's very similar. So I think that, you know, by intent, the issue would be to reach out, but 13 deals with a different subset of tax exemption.
So the difference is, this one, it's high-income properties that we're going to be tax exempting. Do we have any idea how much, what the taxes we would be giving up would be, and, okay?
Yeah. In the board plate, in the third paragraph, we have the total estimate for the tax abatement for all districts is 71,424, and the district's portion is approximately $16,468 for the first year. Now, it's also important to recognize that this project is within the Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area, so there's, that tax base is frozen, so we, as a district, we wouldn't receive that tax increment increase anyways. So this is really no effect to our existing revenue or future revenue over the next 10 years.
Director Kylo?
So are we looking, the city is asking for up to 10 years. Are we putting a limit on ours? I didn't see it in the resolution.
We're not, we're actually.
So we're looking for 10 years, or we're looking for one? BG 13 was for one.
Right.
So what are you proposing?
This is proposing that, and if you look at the resolution on the backside of the board plate.
I did.
That you agree with the city's assessment in issuing a tax exemption for this project.
For how long?
It's for up to 10 years, and so that's typically how they do that. Now, that would be, would also have to be commensurate with the life of the urban renewal area. And I'll double-check, but my belief is the Riverfront URA extends beyond 10 years.
Other questions? Lippold, Director Lippold?
I'll take Chair Lippold if you want. But a quick question for you. So is this, it doesn't, this is not low-income housing, is that correct?
That's correct.
It's just a regular apartment building?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, do you know, have we given other apartment buildings downtown?
We have, in the past, the district has supported tax abatements that weren't low-income housing.
I just, just right off the bat, I see an issue here when we, when we're talking about how we have income problems as a state, as a city, and as a board. Even though a lot of this wouldn't come to us, it would go to our city, but as community members, I think it's important. When we're talking about helping people who need it, and then there's just normal apartments. So if the city just made it easier to build, and there's giving up money for someone to build apartments, I think that's, when we're talking about not having enough funding, just giving it away all the downtown over and over again, is going to cause an issue, but that's just me, so.
Anything else to say? Director Lippold?
So just to clarify, this will come back to us.
In February.
Next meeting, so, but a comment regarding what was just said, this is for, you know, directed at infill and development and the number of units to increase the availability of housing, whether it's low-income or not. It's still, and the tax abatement is based on the need, and it is within a zone that allows for that, and so the idea is to incentivize infill and development in a city that's strapped for lack of housing. So there is a, there's a reason behind this.
No, I understand the reason, I just don't agree.
There is, and I call your attention to the quotes in the first paragraph, which these types of exemptions stimulate the construction of transit-supportive multi, multiple-unit housing in core areas of Oregon's urban centers to improve the balance between the residential and commercial nature of those areas, and to ensure full-time use of the areas as places where citizens of the community have an opportunity to live as well as work. So that just expands your point.
Other comments?
So where again, would the, if we pass this, would the $16,428 go?
It would, it would go to the urban renewal area. It's part of the tax increment financing of the urban renewal area, to stimulate more investment in those core areas.
Other comments? Director Lippold?
Yeah, I understand where, why they're doing it, because they're wanting to promote decreasing rent and things like that, which I totally understand, but another way to do that would be to stop making it so hard to build, and so, or increase the urban boundary, or do literally anything other than stop taking away the money that we use to help people who need it. And so I just think it's important for us to not give away things to people who already are wealthy enough to build apartments. Even though I completely understand the need, it's just that the market will, if there's really that much of a need, you can build it somewhere else, or you can buy the building and make slightly less money for 10 years.
Just my own comment is that one of the reasons we are having housing problems is a lack of inventory, and the city's lack of inventory is just that a reason to keep building and keep going.
Okay, so once again, this comes back for a decision in February. Okay, thank you, and good night.
Thank you.
Other comments?
So where again, would the, if we pass this, would the $16,428 go?
It would, it would go to the urban renewal area. It's part of the tax increment financing of the urban renewal area to stimulate more investment in those core areas.
Other comments? Director Lippel.
Yeah, I understand where, why they're doing it, because they're wanting to promote decreasing rent and things like that, which I totally understand. But another way to do that would be to stop making it so hard to build and so, or increase the urban boundary or do literally anything other than stop taking away the money that we use to help people who need it. And so I just think it's important for us to not give away things to people who already are wealthy enough to build apartments. Even though I completely understand the need, it's just that the market will, if there's really that much of a need, you can build it somewhere else. Or you can buy the building and make slightly less money for 10 years.
Just my own comment is that one of the reasons we are having housing problems is a lack of inventory and the city's lack of inventory is just that a reason to keep building and keep going.
Okay, so once again, this comes back for a decision in February. Okay, thank you and good night.
Thank you.
All right, our next reading tonight is a memorandum of understanding between Salem Kaiser School District and Mountain West Career and Technical Education Center. And this MOU would be the legacy MOU that goes into effect once the property and the building becomes ours. So this is attempting to kind of solidify the public-private partnership portion of the relationship that even when Mountain West is not building out for us, that they, that we still have that public-private partnership. So the board, I just want to call your attention to just a couple changes in this, because you have seen a draft, but under H, the change here from the, from the draft was, we just put a period at the end of the sentence, Sun Tech will be donating the ground to Salem Kaiser School District. We had that right under the MOU as written, but I wanted to make sure, we wanted to be sure it was clear. On page five, that there's a clarification on 4.1.2 that says that CRT, or that Mountain West C-Tech would pay the $1,000 a month to CRT. And then under 4.2 Fund Management, CRT was requesting some language following the property transfer and for a period of five years thereafter, that's new language there for CRT. And then there's the addition of language under 4.2.3. Again, this was Community Resource Trust's request for language. This is going to come back to you for a second reading and a vote, either at our next meeting or in February. And so I'll entertain questions that you might have related to this proposed MOU. You can do now if you'd like. So just to clarify, under H, the draft that we saw had said donated the ground to Salem Kaiser School District or another nonprofit.
Correct.
So that's what was removed, so they can only now donate it to us and not another nonprofit. Yeah, technically, in the, I believe, and I'll let Paul Decopoulos clarify this if I'm not correct, but I believe the lease, the agreement between Sun Tech and Mountain West Investments is that Mountain West's at its sole discretion tells Sun Tech where to donate the property and the facility and it could be another nonprofit if, but we have the right to accept that property first. So in, that's between them, but in this language, it's clearly in multiple places saying Mountain West will direct us. Is that correct?
Yes, and in addition, you'll see in 3.1 on page four, that Mountain, MW C-Tech will coordinate with Sun Tech and CRT for the no-cost transfer of the land, facility improvements and equipment to SKSD. So the original thinking was that maybe Mountain West would transfer the land earlier to CRT and that would be the nonprofit, but they've taken that out. But 3.1 make, has not changed and it makes it very clear that the intent is that Mountain West is going to essentially coordinate between Sun Tech and CRT for the transfer of everything. So even if we didn't clarify the language in H, we still have this language, but now H is clarified too.
So the no-cost transfer, that does, that refers to the cost of the land, not any other closing costs that will come up?
Well, the idea was there's going to be no cost to the district board as you consider the donation. This is a donation of everything. CRT has the facility, Sun Tech has the land and Mountain West is going to coordinate so that this board decides whether to accept the donation, free of, free of cost. Now, once you, you accept the donation, it's now ours and it's your cost, along with the promises in the MOU for the continued partnership. But you would be responsible as a district, because it's your land and your facility.
Other questions?
All right, we'll bring it back for a second reading and a vote. All right, we'll move on to reports. And our first report, I'm going to have Craig Sproles, our Director of Academic Achievement, do the introduction.
Chairperson Goss, Vice Chair Blazi, Superintendent Perry, and my name is Craig Sproles and I'm the Director of Academic Achievement. And you might remember in December, I presented what will be the first of a series of board reports about emergent student behaviors. Back in December, we talked about how the frequency and intensity of these behaviors are becoming more and more complex. We talked a little bit about how these behaviors might be related to adverse childhood experiences, which can cause trauma in students as they come to us, as they show up. So the report you're going to hear today is from the Coordinator for the Office of Behavioral Learning, Mr. David Fender. And David's going to talk to you a little bit about how our district is starting to respond to take care of some of our most vulnerable students, which are the students exhibiting these behaviors. And he's going to talk to you about a continuum of supports that we have in the district from universal supports that apply to all students until they're all the way targeted up to individualized supports for individual students who are, who are experiencing some of these extreme behaviors. The next board report you'll hear at a future date is going to be about how we are trying to work with the adults who are impacted by these behaviors, because as you know, and as we heard from the association, as Tyler talked about, these, these types of student behaviors impact students and families and also adults who work in our school communities. So Chris Moore is going to come and talk about how are we trying to get our arms around staff, licensed and classified staff who work with these students every single day. And then finally, we're going to do a spotlight on a school, Highland Elementary, and Principal Kristi Cheever, who's been using some innovative practices to be able to bring the community in and start supporting students who are experiencing some of these behaviors as a little touch point at a school where we're starting to find some success. So, Mr. Fender, you want to come on up? So David, just as a, just as a side note, David's a shining star in our district. He's the person when people are super stressed out and not quite sure what to do next, David's a person who can come and help us find solutions. These are complex issues, complex students, and unfortunately, there's not an easy solution to any of these. So David is a shining star in helping us plot a course forward.
Thank you, Craig. Good evening Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry and fellow board members. I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to get in front of you guys and get a chance to share the information related to the Office of Behavioral Learning and the work that we do across the district for students and staff and families. So I'm going to go ahead and jump in. First, I got to turn this on. Okay. So I thought tonight what we could do is focus on the history of the Office of Behavioral Learning. How did we get to a place where we've identified that we really need comprehensive services and support that are focused on social, emotional learning and behavior for kids? So how did we get there? What are the continuum of supports and services that we, we offer as part of the Office of Behavioral Learning? What are some of the advantages of the current model that we have? We are actually, this is, we're halfway through the second year, so we've had an Office of Behavioral Learning for about a year and a half. So what have we learned in providing those supports and services across the school district? And then really looking at what are some of the next steps as a new department that we need to focus on and ensuring that, like Craig said, you know, staff are feeling supported and students are feeling supported and then also the families supporting the students. So, over the past 10 to 15 years, our state and across the nation, we've experienced a number of kids that are coming to school unprepared to learn. So what does that look like? That looks like kids who are unable to focus for an extended period of time. Kids who are having a hard time regulating emotions within a classroom, even with some redirection and support from staff. And their, the ability of some students, not all students, but some students, to focus on instruction is very, very difficult. And so we've identified the need and the volume and complexity, I think you look 15, 20 years ago, we had maybe, you know, one or two students that had some significant social, emotional and behavioral needs and we were able to identify the necessary supports and services and provide those for the student and for the family. What we're finding is that there's a high volume of students. It's not one or two students per school building. We have two, three, four students in every classroom who are coming to school unready to learn. We, we understand that this isn't, this isn't something that Student Services could solely support. It's, it's really a comprehensive approach, a multifaceted approach. In my previous role as a coordinator here at Student Services, I was focused on providing supports and services. Much of that support was focused on students who were receiving special education services. This is beyond just students receiving individualized education plans or services tied to special education. There needs to be preventative and proactive services for all students within our school district. So that's what happened with the creation of the Office of Behavioral Learning, really focused on the social, emotional and behavioral support for kids and families. So I joke, because I, every time I get together, I have a comprehensive action plan as part of the Office of Behavioral Learning and people get tired of me telling them about our 14-step plan. I am not going to bore you with our 14 action steps that we have, that we routinely monitor. I'm focused on three this evening and then I'm going to share the continuum of services briefly. There's a lot of work that goes into identifying the preventative proactive supports, but also looking at the immediate supports that we need to provide kids and staff. So a couple of years ago, I believe we came and had a conversation with the board about PBIS, that really that was the first step. We wanted to look at positive behavior interventions and supports as a school district. And so looking at tiered instruction within our schools that provides consistency and predictability. So I'm going to talk a little bit again about what PBIS looks like in our schools. We also are wanting to explore and actually are implementing social, emotional learning. So I have some information that I'd like to share with you this evening about social, emotional learning, the importance of SEL, and then how we're embedding that within the instruction that already exists within classrooms. And then finally, I'm going to talk about, again briefly, the continuum of services that we've identified that are necessary in order to get in front and identify proactive, preventative supports, ongoing supports for the students that need it now and then where do we go in the future. So the triangle here, this is, this is actually work that we're focused on as a school district. We're about in the fourth, fifth year of implementation of positive behavior interventions and support. So we, as a school district, as a school district, have really been focused on our behavioral systems. So that right side of the pyramid, we now are having conversations about what it would look like to have tiered academic systems in our schools. So what that's called is a multi-tiered system of support model. So MTSS, where you braid the academic systems and the behavioral systems, and I'm not going to talk to you guys about that, that's another conversation. I really want to focus on the right side of that triangle and, and the behavioral systems that we have in place. So we have three PBIS coaches that provide constant training, consultation and coaching on PBIS implementation across the district. So if you take a look at the, the bottom of the triangle, so that green area, we're identifying tier one supports in our schools. And so our coaches are training our school teams to take a look at the classroom settings to really identify universal strategies, procedures, what are all of the preventative proactive things that we can do to reduce the number of kids who are at the very top of that triangle. So looking at school-wide expectations, what are our school values? What does it look like for, do, do kids understand when they're in the classroom, these are the classroom expectations? When they're in the cafeteria, these are the expectations? We know that when students understand school-wide expectations, when staff understand school-wide expectation, that reduces anxiety. It provides predictability, it provides consistency. And Craig had mentioned in his conversation in December that we need to be, we need to start being trauma-informed as a school district, because we have kids who really don't have predictable lives outside of a school setting. So we need to do everything possible to make school as predictive, as predictable and relational as possible for a number of kids. So really, that tier one, universal supports, when you move up the triangle to tier two, that is those secondary interventions. So there's 5 to 15% of students who are going to need a little bit more support. So that, you're looking at some examples would be a small social skills group with a counselor within a school. It could be some individualized supports, just reviewing the expectations that you have as a school and just having some one-on-one time with, with a student to ensure that they understand and then reinforce the behavior, the positive behavior that you're seeing. So again, just increasing the amount of support. And then finally, at tier three, that's really individualized support for students where you're building comprehensive behavior intervention plans and you're monitoring with data systems and doing some progress monitoring to identify, is the specific system that's in place for this student, is it effective or is it not through data collection? So that's just a brief synopsis on our PBIS work. All schools have gone through tier one training, all schools have gone through tier two, we, many of the elementaries are going through tier three and it's an ongoing, we knew when we implemented PBIS, we had to have our own PBIS district coaches. This isn't something where you can go to the Northwest PBIS Conference for a two-day training, take all of the information, bring it back and implement with fidelity. This is an ongoing conversation that we have year after year, because we have staff turnover, we have building leaders who move on, and we need to continue the work within those buildings, knowing that there's some staff turnover. So our coaches do a phenomenal job of continuing the work in schools and ensuring fidelity. So I'm going to shift now, so we were briefly talking about school-wide behavior systems. Now I'm really going to focus on our district-wide services and supports that we offer as the Office of Behavioral Learning. So I had talked briefly about the importance of social, emotional learning and I wanted So last year, we, we actually have a district work group that's focused on behavioral supports for kids. It's a multidisciplinary group of people. We, we have some university professors, we, the association, both associations are represented. We have teachers, we have school psychologists, number of people who are coming together to talk about the specific needs within our district and then identifying what are some supports, what are some strategies? The focus last year was on social, emotional learning. So looking at the five competencies, so if you look at the, the front page, self-aware- So if you look at the, the front page, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making. We need to focus on both the head and the heart. We're realizing that as a school district. Academic instruction, obviously extremely important, but we also need to put an emphasis on the five social, emotional competencies and talking about self-awareness and identifying how kids are feeling. And then talking about, if you're frustrated and you're upset, how do you appropriately deal with that? We previously haven't had those conversations. So, we're excited about the competencies that we've identified through the work of Castle, that's based out of Chicago. And then also looking at the specific standards related to the competencies. We also identified twelve evidence-based curriculum that schools could use to implement instruction, embed that instruction within the classroom setting. What we've found, many teachers are doing this naturally within the classroom. They just didn't have a name for what they were doing. So now they, they have a vocabulary that they can use with students. So students are starting to be introduced to the competencies. They're understanding how to be more self-aware, how to self-manage. They're helping their peers and their classrooms when they're seeing their peer who's having a hard time self-managing, self-managing and, and giving their peers strategies. So, definitely seeing an impact with the embedding of that instruction. Panorama, I'm, I'm not going to talk a lot about it this evening. We're excited about it. It's a, it's a data platform that's going to allow us to measure the social, emotional learning. So how do we know if this instruction is effective? Panorama is going to give us the ability to measure that through student survey. So, we actually just completed at the secondary level, excuse me, we had to, we took a look at some student competencies. So we're asking students questions about their grit, their growth mindset, their ability to self-manage and their social awareness. There are specific questions in a survey that was delivered to students. We really want to get a baseline. Where are students at and their understanding of these competencies? And then we're looking at student supports and environment. So, what are the teacher-student relationships like within a school? Do they have a sense of belonging? Do they feel safe in our schools? This information is going to be powerful because it can help refine the PBIS work within each building and really target specific demographics within a building that might not feel safe or really don't feel like they belong within their school district. We can drill down to student-specific information. So, we can look at school-based data, we can look at district-wide data. We're excited about that. And I think Chris Moore actually is going to be presenting some information related to Panorama at the next presentation. So, excited about that. We, we have behavior specialist counselors in every building. They help with our PBIS work. Counselors are, are doing a lot of the heavy lifting with the Panorama, delivering surveys, doing staff training. They are not, they are embedded in all of our buildings, not necessarily a part of OBL, but we provide monthly PD and training for those groups and they're a large part of what we do. Talked a little bit about our PBIS coaches. There are three of them. They provide extensive training at all three levels, so that tier one, tier two, tier three. And do a lot of consultation and coaching within school buildings. We have social workers, we have six social workers who do, are divided by high school feeder system. And they identify specific community-based supports for kids and families. I think we have currently over five hundred referrals that, that they're working with right now. So, keep them very busy. And then we, as a department, we provide professional development and training. We're really focused on trauma-informed practices, the neuroscience behind trauma and strategies to support students who have experienced trauma. Social, emotional learning is another topic. And then diffusing disruptive behavior. So looking at classroom management strategies has really been the focus this school year for professional development and training. So moving up the triangle, so I'm sorry that yellow is difficult to read, but, so the secondary interventions that, that we provide. So, our cadre team is probably the most popular group of people within our school district. So that their official title is Instructional Support Assistance. There are thirty-three of those staff, highly skilled. They receive professional development training every week. And they, eighteen of those folks are embedded, working with behavior specialists and counselors. And then we have ten who are school-based floaters divided by, they may support two to three schools. And then we have around five who support district-wide needs. They're a large part of what we do. We have behavior intervention trainers, those, six of those folks within the school district who provide something called MANT training. So really looking at strategies, preventative proactive strategies to limit student behavior. In the event a student becomes unsafe or physically aggressive, they train staff on how to appropriately support that student in a school setting. We have four school psychologists who are really the surgeons within our department and support students with significant needs, support families and identify the necessary resources and supports. And then our school mental health partnership, we, we established that last year. So we've partnered with Children's Behavioral Health, so Marion and Pope County, then also Trillium Family Services, which is based out of Corvallis. And we are providing onsite mental health therapy in twenty-four of our schools. We started with four last year. We're excited about that support as well. So that, looking at secondary interventions. Finally, at the very top of that triangle, so that those tier three supports, that red zone, we have a number of supports. So we, we have a committee called SKET, which actually stands for Student Consultation Intervention Team, not committee. It's a multidisciplinary group of community providers, but also district providers. So we have school psychologists, we have children's behavioral health, DD Services, New Solutions, a number of community-based organizations that provide mental health supports and services for kids. We get together and we talk about students that have significant tier three needs. And we identify supports and services that may help. So those could be school-based supports, district-based supports, community-based supports. And I facilitate that group. We have our SRA, STAT and CIRK. So, SRA stands for the Suicide Risk Assessment. So we have a social worker who is new this year, Ashawn Ely, who runs our new suicide risk assessment process. So looking at suicide prevention, she's providing, she's reached out to Salem Health and actually Salem Health is, is paying six of our social workers. And, and they recently went to a training on QPR, which stands for Question, Persuade and Refer, which is all centered around suicide prevention training. The hope is to provide that training for all staff, students and community members as well. So, we're excited about that. And she's new in her role, but is monitoring all level-two cases is what we call those. So similar to the student, student threat assessment process, which you guys are probably familiar with, and then the suicide, sexual incident response committee. So, two, two school psychologists that support that and then Ashawn Ely in her new role as a social worker. We also have emotional growth center programs and life skill programs, which are more restrictive settings for students that have significant behavioral needs that couldn't be met in, in the typical school setting with all of those tiered supports that I had talked about. We have three program assistants that support those programs and monitor, monitor the instruction that's happening within those programs for, for kids. Finally, at the very top of the triangle, we have the Behavior Intervention Center. I'm the building principal for that program. It's really a therapeutic day school. We currently have eighteen students there, two special education teachers and ten staff who do incredible work for kids, really focused on self-regulation, building resiliency, a lot of it focused on social, emotional learning, building comprehensive plans for kids and then shifting kids into a less restrictive setting. So, a lot of information there, that, that's briefly, that some of the supports and services that we offer as part of the Office of Behavioral Learning. Some of the advantages that we're, that we're seeing is a reduced number of students with tier three needs in schools. We have a number of schools with the appropriate professional development training and support who are getting on top of this. They're being more preventative and proactive with all tier, all three tiers in place for kids. They're feeling confident and strong and providing the right type of support for kids. We're excited about that. School buildings are, are doing a better job of building internal capacity to meet the needs. There are some amazing stories that are happening and just people thinking outside of the box on, on how to support kids with a variety of different needs. And so we have some schools with wellness rooms, proactively embedding social, emotional learning in a student's day. We're seeing some real success with that. We've also, I've, I've been able to develop some strong partnerships with a number of our community agencies. And I sit on a committee, it's called the Behavioral Care Network. So many different community-based agencies coming together and talking about the necessary supports and services, mental health supports and services that kids and families need. The district really hadn't been a part of that conversation in the past and now we are. So we're, we're all kind of coming together and partnering. We can't do it alone, we all understand that. And so that's been, it's been wonderful to partner with some of those agencies. And then finally, the ability to monitor, have conversations with staff, identify necessary supports and services and, and really have focused time on figuring out the, the specific services we need to meet those needs. So, we're going to continue to monitor our effectiveness through tiered fidelity inventory is what it's called, it's TFI, which looks at fidelity of implementation of PBIS. We do that routinely. Staff survey, asking for staff feedback on the supports and services. We're providing a number, a number of different ways that, that we're collecting data to ensure that we're doing the right work. We're going to continue our PBIS training. We're going to look at increasing access to onsite mental health therapy in our schools. We really want to take a look at introducing early childhood PBIS, SEL at their early childhood levels. Started having conversations with Stephanie Wetzel about what that would look like. She's doing some of those things now. I think there's more that we could do for our, our little people and our families. So they're exposed to this information before they transition into our school district and then continuing to increase our partnerships with community-based organizations. Thank you. Questions?
No, that was a lot.
Are there any questions? Director Green?
So the increase over the last ten to fifteen years, is that just in Oregon or is that nationwide?
So that's across the nation.
Do you think there's a correlation between social media and the increase in these behaviors?
I don't think it helps. And I think we're, we're just now starting to see, there's research coming out to say that, uh, that may be part of the problem.
Others? Director Green?
So, David, you mentioned that this work was, we created OBL about a year and a half ago. Was this in the Office of Student Services previously?
No.
Or was it? It was nowhere?
It didn't exist.
Okay.
So I, I really, in my role here, we were providing some behavioral supports, but it was only for students receiving special education services. And we knew it needed to be more of a global conversation.
And you mentioned that all of our schools have gone through tier one and tier two training. Is that correct?
Yes.
What's the timeframe for getting all of our schools through tier three?
So within the next two years.
Okay. And just a couple more, these aren't really questions, probably comments more than anything else. You mentioned we have three PBIS, three PBIS coaches district-wide.
Yes.
And six social workers that cover a high school feeder system.
Yes.
So I guess my comment, Madam Chair, is again directed at the Superintendent. I hope we see budget priority to increase these. If additional revenues come our way to increase our social, emotional learning issues that are going on not only in our school district, but across the state. You know, when we lose one student, that's one too many. So, I want to make sure we've got the resources that we need to have because six across the district this size of social workers is just not enough. And you could have forty-seven and it may not be enough. But I, I do want to see some budget priorities given to beefing this system up in some ways. And I guess the other thing I'd ask, David, while we're focused on the students, obviously, I mean, there's stress on our staff. Tyler mentioned it. Do we have any way of providing counseling or social, emotional work to our staff as they're dealing with these issues? Because we've lost a staff member this year too.
Yep.
So, are, are we looking at that?
Yes, definitely. So our, our district actually provides it. I'm, I'm totally forgetting.
That may be out of HR and not in your business.
It is. So there is a service, a counseling service that we provide as a school district. We're also, something that I didn't mention tonight, and I think Chris is going to mention it, Chris Moore, who's one of our school psychologists, is staff wellness. So really considering staff wellness, making sure that staff feels supported just as much as the students. And he's taking that various, very seriously. And, and we're looking as a school district to have a committee focused on figuring out, how do we come alongside staff and make sure they feel validated and heard and supported? So, he, he's going to provide all of that information at the next board meeting.
Thanks, David. I guess my plea is to the Superintendent, as she builds her budget, to come forward with the budget message is, you know, pay particular attention to this because we're seeing more and more of this, not only in Salem-Kaiser, but across the state. And hopefully we can get those additional resources to address these needs.
Jesse, are there concerns?
I second that motion. And then I also wanted to say, wanted to ask you a quick question. So, because we implemented this, it was like a year and a half ago, correct?
Yes.
Because I remember when we first were, were looking at it, we had a chart that where we could see how each school was kind of rolling it out.
Uh-huh.
So it'd be really interesting to see, because it's been a little while since we've seen that, if we could see a report of how, how it's going, just like a progress report.
Where schools are at in implementation.
And how it's going, what's the feedback? Just because I think it'd be really good for us to hear.
Mm-hmm. I could do that.
Are there other concerns? Director Glassy?
So, first of all, thank you. I've heard you come to our neighborhood schools and speak to parents about this issue. So thank you for coming to us. To absolutely agree with Director Green and Lippold, but we were talking about universal supports and the staffing. So the question I have is the secondary, the yellow zone, which because of the severe needs are, what, what do you think the, what's the range of the need? Is it more in the yellow and the red as far as staffing needs?
Yeah, I think what we're seeing is less red. So there was a lot of red when we started this work. And it, it's going to take time. It's not like it's, you know, overnight, we're going to have significantly less kids with needs. But we're already a year and a half into the work. We're recognizing that we're able to push some of the students that had tier three needs into yellow. But also, we're recognizing that school teams are able to push students in that yellow zone down to green with those supports and services in place, so, yeah.
So I guess the question, sorry, is, do we feel as though the staffing capacity in the yellow area is sufficient at this point? Or is that another place for us to ensure that we have more support?
I, I think it's too early to tell, just to be honest with you, because we're in the early stages of implementing tier two and tier three. Schools who are further along are, are seeing that with the help of that embedded cadre, the behavior specialist counselor and additional school staff, they're able to help support those students in the yellow zone.
Are there concerns? Thank you very much. It was a good presentation.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, I think that's a good idea. Let's take a five-minute break and we'll reconvene in quarter after. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So, this is the presentation of the work of the Boundary Review Task Force and I'm going to, we're going to start with Mike Wolf, our Chief Operations Officer.
Good evening, Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, members of the board. So, tonight completes the work of the Boundary Review Task Force that started in late September and the task force met, we'll get into a little more detail here in a second, but met almost weekly in all of October and November and then wrapped up in December. And I'd really like to acknowledge the dedication and commitment of the members of the task force. It was all volunteer, a lot of hard work and in particular, the leadership of the co-chairs, Adriana Miranda and Adam Kohler, and they'll be presenting as well tonight. And if there are any task force members in the audience tonight, please stand and be recognized. We'd like to say thank you. Thank you. We'd also like to acknowledge and thank Flow Analytics, our consultant experts in this area who helped us along the way and continues to support us as we move into implementation. They were a great partner in the process. So, just briefly, the task force was comprised of over 50 parents, staff, advocacy groups and district leadership. A membership was representative of each level, elementary, middle and high school and of each feeder system throughout the district. We also had two board members, Directors Kylo and Green, who were assigned to the task force. And all board members, all of you attended one or both of the community events, so we really want to thank you for your support as well. Each of you have a binder in front of you or you are going to have a binder in front of you as we hand them out. And so, as that's happening, I'll just orient you to it generally and then later on in the presentation, you'll have an opportunity to dig into it deeper, get into more of the content. So, the boundary adjustment recommendations presented tonight will be discussed in detail, much more detail, at the next board meeting, next week, next Tuesday. So, we would ask that, if you can, keep any of the detailed questions for that interaction next Tuesday, but certainly feel free to ask any clarifying questions throughout the presentation. And as soon as you get a binder, I will, everyone's got a copy now? Okay, super. So, you flip, open your binder to the very first page and you'll see the binder content and you'll also notice that the binder is organized into two tabs. And so, you can see the content in order within each tab listed on the first page. And so, that's the sum total of my overview of this because really what we want to do is get you into the presentation with the co-chairs. And boom, boom, boom. Can somebody push a button? Thank you. I'd like to start with a review of the outcomes and a very brief overview of how we got to this point with a recap of the 2018 General Obligation Bond Program. Then Adriana will walk you through the work of the task force, followed by Adam presenting the task force recommendations in more detail. But the major outcomes, as you can see, are tonight you will receive the recommendations from the task force, which will be followed by the board work session, as I stated already, next Tuesday, which that will also include a first reading of the boundary proposal changes. And ultimately, you just need to turn it on. Thank you. There you go. It's a great team, district team, by the way. And wherever I was. So, February is when you'll make, we're scheduled to make a decision on the boundary changes with the implementation in fall of 2019 for the district. And so, just briefly, you're very familiar with the bond program and as you know, we started that program well over three years ago and this is really part of the culmination of a lot of that work. As you may recall, our long-range facility plan, based on ORS 195-110, requires that we consider non-construction options. In most cases, what a non-construction option would entail would be a boundary review. And so, we're right in keeping with the long-range facility plan and the intent of the bond as well. Also, want to make sure that we review the fact that in our bond program, over 70% of the investment goes to supporting current future enrollments with additional classroom capacities. Our planning assumptions that you're well aware of were the PSU student projections. We spent time with our educational specifications and we've done the capacity analysis to know where to put the classrooms and we have 29 projects which will increase classrooms at those schools. And some of our more larger investments are at our high schools, which is the expanding to 2,200 model, except for West where that's 2,100. And that's really important because that drove a lot of conversations with the Boundary Review Task Force. And then finally, the connection to the bond program and the Boundary Review Task Force will be in the recommendations tonight and Adriana and Adam will go over those with you right now, as a matter of fact. So, this is a great transition for Adriana to take over and she'll guide you through the next few slides and then over to Adam for a wrap-up.
Good evening, Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, Vice Chair Blassey and members of the board. For the record, my name is Adriana Miranda, co-chair of the task force. So, I'll begin with the boundary review process and we'll start with the basic question of why are we revealing boundaries? So, we're a growing district with many overcrowded schools and an imbalance between feeder systems. Thankfully, the 2018 bond adds classrooms at 29 schools and much more throughout the district and we still need to adjust school boundaries to handle the projected student growth. Over the next few slides, we'll review the superintendent's charge, the task force organization, the process and timeline leading up to the recommendations. So, looking at the superintendent's charge, the Boundary Review Task Force was established by Superintendent Perry to accomplish the following outcomes. So, using the district's boundary adjustment, guiding principles and equity focus, we reviewed the springboard proposal to develop a consensus set of recommendations that one, creates a balance between high school attendance feeder systems, aligns future student populations with future school capacities and identifies implications for the 2018 bond program. We were charged to intentionally engage community members of underserved, diverse or marginalized individuals and groups and the presentation that you have before you tonight. The next few slides, we'll dig deeper into the guiding principles, the equity focus and task force decision-making process. The district's boundary review guiding principles and equity lens provided a useful framework throughout the process to help guide the task force conversations. You have an extended version of these in your binder that was used as a way to help navigate through some tough conversations. The guiding principles, and you have all of them up there, so allow adequate room for required programs and anticipated growth within each school's capacity and throughout the district. Ensure the access to equitable education opportunities, ensure safety to and from school and provide continuity in school assignments for students, families and schools. Ensure affected impacted community members are involved in the process and represent ethnic and socioeconomic diversity and consider the impact to established neighborhoods. Equity was a central part of the work of the task force and we challenged ourselves to ask tough questions throughout the process. We know that change is hard and worked to minimize the impact of those mostly affected. District leadership provided the task force with training on equity, what it is and what it isn't, which was very helpful and informative. We felt that this slide summed up the difference between equality and equity in a way that really spoke to the task force members and provided a useful framework for having difficult The task force worked hard at reaching general consensus whenever possible and when necessary. After much discussion, used a majority vote to finalize recommendations and we know that 100% agreement was not the goal and we encourage each task force member to share their thoughts and values throughout the process. As co-chairs, we worked with district staff and FLO to provide insight and leadership throughout the process. We also worked hard to make sure that every meeting was well-organized, focused and inclusive. And I'll let Adam guide you through the task force process and timeline and recommendations.
Thank you, Adriana. For the record, my name is Adam Kohler and I have two students in the Salem-Kaiser School District. My daughter goes to South and my son goes to Pringle. They are currently watching and since this will probably be the only time I'm ever on TV, kids, I won and you can go to bed now. Had to, I mean, come on, it's 7:33 here. Had to add some levity to it. So, I'm going to walk you through the process and the timeline and I'm also going to walk you through this binder. And I also have this thing where when I present, I walk. And so, if I get away from the microphone, please raise your hand if you can't hear me because that's the way that I present. So, in terms of talking about our process and timeline, this whole process, I'm sure you are well aware, started in the January to August timeframe when the district staff worked with Flow Analytics to refine the projected student populations at each school over the next five to 10 years. And that five to 10-year cycle is going to come in, you're going to hear that a lot in the next 10 to 18 minutes. But along those lines, this information was compared with post-bond capacity to determine the percent of over-capacity and/or under-capacity student population at each school. A springboard proposal was developed as a starting point for the work of the task force. That springboard proposal was built using the following assumptions and guidance, the district's equity focus, the boundary review guiding principles and results from a community-wide survey. And those results from the community-wide survey are in your binder in the appendix. From the September to December timeframe, the task force had its initial meeting in late September and then we met almost weekly from November into December. There were a few breaks. For example, we took the week off during parent-teacher conferences and there also was a time where after our first open house, we realized that maybe we need to pause, do some outreach to the community and then come back a week later. And so, essentially, we worked for, going on three months, to refine this process. There is a summary sheet, as we flip through the binders, I'll highlight to you, that shows the specific number of meetings and community engagement opportunities. And I will, will say to you just now that it is pretty impressive, the outreach and the efforts to which the district went to our community. The one thing that I want to highlight and stress is the, that in this process, community feedback was crucial to the work of the task force. Each and every comment that was received by the district staff was reviewed by the task force. I know Adriana and I read every single email that was sent to the district and much of that community feedback was integral in assisting the task force as we worked through this Continuing on with the conversation about the task force recommendations, the task force believes that these recommendations fulfill the superintendent's charge by using community input to create a more sustainable balance between those high school feeder systems. These recommendations are based on the post-bond capacities for each school over the next five to 10 years. As I mentioned, that five to 10 years will become a common theme. And as a growing district, we anticipate that the future changes may need to be made to these recommended boundary adjustments and it is our hope that between now and then, there will be more affordable housing throughout the community. I think that was touched on earlier in this board meeting as well. With respect to community input, we received community input from various sources, including a community survey that was conducted through Flow Analytics just prior to the start of the task force, directly from the community at our listening sessions and I'll touch base on those in a minute. A focus group, which was held at Four Corners in response to some of the feedback that we received as a task force, I mentioned that earlier with the pause that we had. The district had staff meetings around the district to hear what the teachers and what the staff had to say about things. And then we also had online surveys. As we had our listening sessions and our open houses, we had the opportunity for people to fill out forms at that time or to go online and fill out forms. Each of those responses was shared with the task force and they were reviewed and it helped us to guide our decisions. The items that are listed on this slide, if everybody wants to look to their left, are by no means a complete list of community statements or concerns. However, the task force feels that these themes generally capture what we heard from our community and helped shape the task force recommendations. Along those lines, you do have community engagement stat sheet in your binder, which I mentioned before, and that contains more detailed information about the extent of the input, which will help you understand what we're talking about. So, Mike did a brief introduction to the binders, but now is my opportunity to educate you guys on what has been provided. As we open our binders, you can see the first page is your boundary adjustments, the content, which Mike walked through. Page two has the boundary task force superintendent's charge. I want to make sure everybody is able to go through this. I don't want to run too fast because it's important you understand what's there. Page three is the guiding principles, front and back. Page four is your equity lens questions with the responses to those questions. And then this is the, page five would be the community engagement summary. As you can see at the bottom of that, the highlights of the outreach efforts, those are some of the numbers that I referenced in terms of community outreach and things that the task force received in response. Then we move to my favorite slide. This triangle is a visual representation of the feeder system for each of the six high schools in our district. As you review this slide, you will see that the high school is at the top of the triangle in green, the aqua color is your middle schools and then the blue color is your elementary schools. There are a few things I want to review with this slide, just so you understand what you're looking at. The first one is, there is a graphical representation of a partial school. For example, if we look at North Salem, you'll see that there's a, for the middle schools, there's a full circle and then a partial circle. That reflects a school which has a split up to the next level and we will discuss splits in a moment. The second one that I want to highlight is the number of feeder schools in each triangle. So, if we look at McKay, for example, it currently has, in the existing school feeder system, 10 elementary schools that feed up through to McKay. There are a couple of things you want to note there. The first one is, as I'm sure you are all aware, each elementary school is not the same. The population of a school is, it varies quite a bit throughout our district, but seeing that number of 10 elementary schools into McKay is pretty stark. Currently McKay, the McKay High School feeder system is the largest in terms of number of schools included and more importantly, the number of current and projected students which will feed into McKay in five to 10 years. I think it's no secret that that is a major driver for much of what we, as a task force, were working on. The final item that I want to direct your attention to regarding this slide is the number of splits in the existing school feeder system. We currently, in the existing system, have nine schools which are split to different middle or high schools. There are seven elementary splits and two middle school splits. And there's one middle school, Parish, which is actually split between three high schools. As you turn to the next page, this is the representation of the task force. Again, nothing has changed in terms of the colors and the representations of the schools and things of that nature, but what you would see here, or what you will see here, is that the task force recommendation reduces the total number of schools which are split to six. We removed four elementary schools. We removed the triple split at Parish, which is very important to the task force. And we added two additional middle school splits at Hauck and Waldo. I'll walk you through the numbers here in a little bit, but that was a very important theme for much of the task force. It was removing those elementary school splits. And I think what we've presented here, what we are presenting here is a good job. As you go to the next page, you will see a summary sheet which identifies the boundary and feeder system adjustments and the splits. Is everybody there? Okay. So, what I want to do here is, I want to just walk you through this so that you understand what you're looking at. what you're looking at. At the top of the sheet, you should see elementary school, middle school, high school. Is there a boundary change? Is there a feeder system change? The existing percent split and the recommended percent split. And just for the sake of this presentation, I want to walk you through two. If you start at Chapman Hill, as you go down, it's what, the seventh item on the list, you'll see it goes to Straub, goes to West Salem. Was there a boundary change? And the answer is no, based on our presentation. Is there a feeder system change? And the answer is no. Now, Chapman Hill previously had a 45, 55 split, and the task force recommends that we eliminate that split. So that's what you're looking at. For another example, let's go down to Scott, which just happens to be the seventh from the bottom, Scott Elementary School. And Scott feeds into Waldo, which feeds into McKay. Was there a boundary change? The answer is no. Is there a proposed feeder system change? Yes. And then the one here, this stood out a lot to our task force members, there used to be a 1090 split. And think about that 10% that had to go to a different school. Well, the task force recommended that we eliminate that split. So that orients you to this page and what you will be reviewing at your leisure in the next week. Okay. This is the table. This is Mike Wolf's favorite table. So to give you, and I'm kind of going off book here, I know it's probably a little late for everybody, but I wanted to run you through the process and how exactly the task force worked with this. This is a table that essentially, any changes that we proposed, any changes the task force members proposed, Flow Analytics ran the computer model and then they came up with this chart. There are two parts to this. One is the student population and the next one is the impact to free and reduced lunch, English learning, language learners, and special education, which I'll walk you through as well. But just so you know, these were the numbers and this was the data that the task force used to make sure that what they were doing and what we were proposing made sense. So what I want to do here is if you open up this fold and you go to Kaiser Elementary School, actually, let me walk you through the header first, just so you understand that. At the header, you have the grade level, the attendance area, the 2017 students by residence, the 2022 students by residence, again, that five and 10-year plan, the 2022 percent capacity. It was mentioned earlier that Flow Analytics did that research based on percent capacity. The 2022 magnitude, that is the students' over or under capacity. We go to 2027 with the students by residence, the 2027 percent capacity, and then the 2027 magnitude of over and under capacity. That's the existing situation. As you continue to the task force recommendations across the line, you will see those same titles. 2017 students, 2022 students by residence, capacity, over and under, and then the same for 27. Everybody on the same page with me right now? Seen a lot of heads nodding, none shaking. Okay. So let's run through Kaiser. Let's pick one school, one school that was impacted. As you go down alphabetically, to make sure everybody's on the line for Kaiser, you will see that 2017, in its existing structure, Kaiser Elementary School has 799 students. By 2022, that number will rise to 819 students based on Flow Analytics formula. That would be a capacity of 115% in 2022 if we did nothing, and this is post-bond, recall. That's 108 students over capacity. By 2027, that student population jumps to 859, which is 120.8% over capacity, which is 148 students. So that's the existing structure post-bond. As you continue across the line, based on our task force recommendations, you can see that through some boundary adjustments, we proposed that Kaiser starts off with 631 students. By 2022, Kaiser Elementary School would have 659 students, which is a 92.7% capacity, which is 52 students under population. By 2027, that number rises to 685 students, which is still at 96.3% capacity and 26 students under that population. Is everybody following that one? Because this is really a big deal in terms of understanding, especially for your constituents who might say, hey, my school, what's the impact on it? So if you will turn, if you fold that one in and then turn two pages to, it says overview table and charts, it'll say school, existing task force recommendation, but it's a little bit more spread out. Along the header of this one, you'll see that it has a grade level, the attendance area, the percent free and reduced lunch, the percent special education, and the percent ELL. Is everybody on that page? I see some folks might not be there yet. Everybody there? Okay. So let's go back to Kaiser, as we're here. Kaiser Elementary School, as it currently is structured, has 77.2% free and reduced lunch. They have 15.4% special education and 29% ELL. The task force recommendations would change those numbers to be 74% free and reduced lunch, 13.3% special education, and 23.9% ELL. Everybody on the same page? We all good with the information? Because this was, these two forms were what drove the task force with, based on community input and things of that nature. Okay.
I know it doesn't need to be said, but I feel the need to say it, that Flow Analytics did calculate those who were leaving and being replaced, so this wasn't just adding on over time.
Correct, yes.
I mean, I think that needs to be stated, that that was, when people look at these numbers and see these huge numbers in the existing, that that wasn't just tacking on, that was actual replacement numbers.
And there were trends that were shown in the, for example, the population ages out and we realize that there have been these discussions in the budget.
Yeah, having been there and seen the numbers, yeah. But I don't know that everybody saw those, so.
Thank you for that, absolutely. Any other questions on this one? Because it is important, and I know we have questions later, but I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with where we're at. Okay. All right. Now, we are going to jump to the maps. And this is where, if the internet were working, we would put it online and show you guys all the beautiful maps, but I've been told that these are online. So those watching at home can definitely look at that. But what I would recommend is that if you guys could turn to the third map, which is the elementary school boundaries. And because we don't have the internet, I would suggest you take it out, turn it 90 degrees. And there's a reason why we're going to do this. Oh, we do have internet. But again, if you wanted to do this, I can walk you through the maps as well, just so you can stare it in front of yourself. So we are currently, we have the map of the task force recommendations for elementary school boundaries. You have maps for the high school and the middle schools here. And then the next few pages have your breakdown of any changes that are proposed based on the school that it feeds into. So for example, now that you've taken out the elementary school, you should have McKay High School feeder boundary changes in front of you on your right-hand side. Everybody there? Okay. So essentially with this map, this was a very creative way to do it, but essentially what this map did is it created some call-out boxes, and the call-out boxes were numbered. And then they draw to a certain demographic area that has been basically hashed to show you the changes. The example that I want to use for this first exercise is Hammond Elementary School, which is a feeder to McKay. So if you're looking at McKay and you go to the second page, or you go to the second school, you'll see that Hammond Elementary School has a number seven by it and the number 33 by it. Does everybody see that in the description? Okay. Going back to the map, and there's a reason I chose Hammond, is that the second box from the upper right is number seven. And you can see, it goes down to an orange section on the map that has been hashed. And we're zooming in on the map here as well, so you can see that if you prefer. And essentially, if you read the note, it says that this section was moved from Clearlake Elementary School to Hammond Elementary School. And that was box number seven. The next box that is referenced for Hammond Elementary School is number 33. And this one is actually just a much smaller part of the map. If you follow that line, I can't even tell you honestly what color it is, but there's a little tiny box there that has actually moved from Hammond Elementary School to Hayesville Elementary School. Everybody see that and feel comfortable with that? Okay?
Yeah. Tiny.
And I can run through one more school, or if you guys feel comfortable, we can just go to the next.
We're good.
One more? No, you're comfortable? Okay, we're good. All right. At this point, if you wanted to, you could put those maps back in your book so you don't I was going to change the presentation. Go to the next slide here. Okay. So, we have presented quite a few items in this book and in the boundary review, the recommendations that change a lot of the students that go to schools. But the task force also has a number of recommendations regarding specific boundary adjustments that is actually on the last page before the appendix, if you guys wanted to follow along there. But I wanted to run through these just to express to you how important it was to the task force, that in addition to the changes to the boundaries, there were some additional charges that we hope, that we would like to recommend to the district. First and foremost, we recommend that the district add capital construction projects at Kennedy and Miller Elementary Schools to alleviate current and future capacity issues. Currently, Kennedy Elementary School has seven portable classrooms. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that or not. I see some people nodding their heads. But the one that drove the biggest conversation for all of us was Miller Elementary. We discussed Miller at length. This was a school that really didn't fit into some of the boundary rearrangements that were proposed. And the reality is that if we don't do anything in terms of capital construction, that school will be at 128% capacity in five years and at 133% capacity in 10 years. And so I'm on behalf of the task force, am passionately pleading to you to add a capital construction project to address those overages. The second thing that we would ask is that you, as a district, review the current, or the existing continuity exemption process related to providing transportation for students and families that would desire to stay at their existing schools through their current grade level. We would also ask that you review and adjust the current in-district transfer process, guidelines and communication methods to better manage current and future school capacities over the next three to five-year implementation window. And I will say that this was another hot-button topic. A lot of the task force members and the community members were concerned about the in-district transfer process in terms of why there is overcrowding. We would like the district, or we would ask, recommend to the district that you conduct a final staff review of the proposed boundary adjustments to ensure that they make sense from a property line and transportation perspective. And finally, we would like, we would recommend that the district identify any additional investments needed to fully implement the task force recommendations. The final slide. On behalf of Adriana and me and the entire task force, I do want to thank Superintendent Perry and the district leadership for giving us the opportunity to help with this very important work. We are all passionate and dedicated to the success of our students and our communities, and I think you can see that in the work that the task force provided. This was not an easy undertaking by any measure, but we believe that we fulfilled the superintendent's charge while also taking the time to listen to the feedback from our community. And at this point, we'd be happy to ask or answer any questions that you had from the board at this time.
Are there concerns?
I just have a question. A while back, I heard from a parent who lives in Kaiser where one side of the street went to one school and their buddies across the street went to another school. Has that been resolved so that your friends right across the street will go to the same school that you will?
Director Hay, and I think I remember that conversation with that specific parent at one of our listening sessions out in Waldo. And that parent actually reached out to me personally a day later and asked if they could attend one of our task force meetings, and they did. And they listened in and watched the process. And that was one of the concerns that came back through the survey, where all the task force members were able to look at it, and we did address it. And we made changes to specifically address that and a few other changes that came through from our feedbacks. So yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there concerns or comments?
So, oh. I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you guys have put in. I mean, we went to some of the, you guys' open house events and we got to talk to parents and see you guys interact with them, especially after the community gave feedback of how they felt. Just your willingness to step back and communicate with our community, I thought was really awesome. I think that was really good, really well done. And yeah, so thank you so much for everything you guys did.
So I also agree that the entire board owes you a big debt to the service you've given to us. And just amazing that you have come up with these and that there is almost all good comment about it. And I thank you both.
So I just will add, we had a conversation offline, a couple of us, about equity work is messy. And they stood in the, you know, we had a very sequential process outlined, and when it got hard and needed to divert course, we just, you know, kind of stood in the conflict. And I think that what we saw from the task force was really better work because you, with the district leadership, really stood in that really tough conflict. So we're better because of it. I think our, I was really impressed with the amount of outreach and how we switched our engagement strategies. Our first engagement strategies weren't getting to all parents that needed it. So I can't say that we've gotten to 100% because there's only 700 on the list, but from where we started to where we finished with feedback was really impressive. So really, thank you for your leadership, both of you, and also to Mike and our internal team for the work you did on this.
And I do want to take a minute really to thank Mike and Karma and Dave and really the school leadership, because yes, I think when conversations about equity became very, very tough, the school leadership didn't hesitate to take a step back and really intentionally take a look at the outreach efforts. So thank you so much for that. It's been a pleasure.
Her version of pleasure and mine are very different, so.
Fair enough. I'll move us on from one more report. Executive limitation report, number eight, financial administration. And I'm going to do the high-level highlights. If you look at number three, materially in debt the organization unless authorized by the board, I have not done that, but you have by going out and issuing our first sale of the bonds. So that's reflected in this executive limitation. And then I think the other place I'd like to make note is around our external audit. We have been working quite closely with our auditors and our preliminary audit work and in our CAFR presentation. So the CAFR, the comprehensive financial report, is available on our website. And one of the reports in our audit last year of the 17, 18 CAFR from our auditor's opinion in number 10, that the district financial statements present fairly in all material respects. And one of the things that we're hearing over and over again from our auditors is about our attention to detail is increasing, and that's also makes them want to audit us. They used to have a flip a coin who would come to Salem Kaiser because we're big and complex. Now, the auditing team asks to be on our team. And so I want to just specifically thank Sarah Head for her work with our financial department and the leadership of Mike around that work. And that is why you see a report with lots of evidences of compliance. So I'll open up for questions if you have any.
Questions? Sharon?
So I don't have a question, but I like to geek out when we talk about the CAFR and, because it is incredibly important. And when you're trying to manage a budget of over $600 million and to get, you know, clean financial audited statements every year, but I wanted to note, I went online to look, turns out the school district also, again, received the certificate of excellence for its CAFR for the fiscal year ending 2017, and I think this is '18 as well and several years prior to that. So that's a huge compliment to the work that you do. And, you know, keeping the numbers straight and especially when you throw in bond sales and all of that. So kudos to Mike and your team. That's a big, big accomplishment.
Other concerns or questions? Okay. I do want to call your attention to the board and budget committee meeting schedules. They're in the packet. And to remind you that the next board meeting is the 22nd, and we have asked people to save their comments on our boundary decisions until then, and you will have another opportunity in the first February meeting. And I sure thank everybody that. And I sure thank everybody that's here that's kind of put that in their pocket for now and given us a chance to read ahead. The boundary review task force meeting schedule is also in the back. And Community Bond Oversight Committee, the CBAC Committee, will meet on Monday, January 28th, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Lancaster Professional Center, room 101. And any questions on those dates? Okay, let's move on. We now have the last section of public comment, and this is for items that don't necessarily have to be on the agenda. First speaker tonight will be Rita, Rita Glass.
Good evening, Chair Goss, Vice Chair Blasi, Superintendent Perry, and distinguished members of the board. First of all, I would like to thank you for your service as we celebrate School Board Appreciation Month, the countless hours and volunteer hours at that that you chose for yourselves, so. And not only to you, but to your significant others, your pets, your children, and whoever else you leave behind, thank them as well. Give them an extra hug or a doggy bone or, or some fresh cat litter, but that's, so I'd like to thank you. I'm Rita Glass, and I come to you this evening as the president of Ask ESP, our Classified Union Association. I am going to ask that the possibility be taken to action items, and it'll give us the opportunity to appreciate you even more. And so, as you know, I, it is a critical time. One of my biggest stressors as the leader of the ESPs is the fact that my members do get injured on a daily basis and repeatedly. And that hurts my heart, and they keep coming back. And so what we're going to ask that you possibly take action on is critical, not only to our staff, but to our students. We are going to ask that this school board pass a resolution in support of and to encourage legislative efforts and on its campaign to fully fund public education in Oregon. I believe the resolution should be written jointly with our two association employee groups and a board member or the whole board to make it personal and tailored to our district. On behalf of all students, our members and families, it is imperative and the right time to show our lawmakers that our public schools need full funding now. We know that all of our students deserve better, and our staff also deserve better. We are the voice that can make it happen. This is the time the educators around Oregon and the nation are standing up and saying enough is enough by wearing red for public ed every Wednesday. Wearing red for public ed is a national movement, and Oregon has joined the movement in our Red for Ed in Oregon campaign. We hope you will join us by wearing red every Wednesday and as we demand that Oregon lawmakers adequately fund public education in our state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rita. Our next speaker is a past, past school board member, Willie, Willie Richardson.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not going to walk back there, but I am going to say it again. Good evening.
Good evening.
There are some courtesies that we should never, ever not do. My genuine good evening to all of you. And I respect the work that you do, having been there, done that, don't think I want to do it again, but I appreciate your work and your service. Dr. Carol E. Davis, Deputy Superintendent for the Salem-Kaiser Public Schools under Superintendent Homer Kearns, passed away on December 22nd, 2018, and a celebration of life was held in Seattle, Washington on Thursday, January 10, 2019. Carol was a bombshell delivered to this district and this community by Superintendent Kearns. She was a bombshell because there were three to four other individuals within the district that were strong and viable candidates. And at that time, many of us who were part of this district as advocates had our odds on one or two of them. We all lost. And I, for one, am thankful. Carol immediately saw a need, not only for the diversity staffing in the district, but a need for the children of color, particularly African-American students, to know more about their Oregon heritage. She had a partial solution to this, and it is her greatest gift and legacy to this community and to the state of Oregon. She was the founder of Oregon Black Pioneers, which was established to research the history of African-Americans in Oregon. We are the organization that researched and published Perseverance, a history of African-Americans in Oregon's Marion and Polk Counties, a copy of which is in our local public library. And we had anonymously, anonymously donated to each middle and high school in this district a copy. We're celebrating our 25th anniversary on Saturday, March 2nd in Wilsonville. This evening, you are receiving a formal invitation being handed to you and my personal verbal request for you to attend. However, unlike my invitation to you to view our exhibit Racing to Change at the Oregon History Museum in 2018, this one does not come with free tickets. We hope that you will be able to share your evening with us as we continue the vision and purpose of the gift and legacy that keeps on giving to this entire state. And I do thank you for this time.
And we thank you, Mrs. Richardson, for the time you spent.
Okay, I've already signed up.
Thank you, Willie. Our next speaker will be Russ Schwarzentruber. Ross, I'm sorry, I know that.
Thank you, Chair Goss. And Directors and Superintendent Perry, good evening. I have some notes, but the first thing I wanted to say about the boundary process that we just went through, I'd like to thank you and specifically the task force. I saw quite a few new developments that I haven't seen in the community, and I think everybody deserves a big thank you, specifically being able to have those open houses, which I saw more community members involved than I have seen in quite a few years, and I, that's a good sign. And also the fact that the task force listened to the community and made changes. And so thanks for doing that. Today, I'd like to talk a little bit about opting out and make sure that we have the notification sent out a month prior to testing. Our kids really need to know that there are options to the standardized tests. And I'd also like to talk about what's called the American Anti-Corruption Act, and that is House Resolution 1 at the federal level at this point in time. And basically, it's kind of a blueprint of different types of transparency and campaign finance reform, different rules that agencies all over the states, about 98 so far, have taken to improve democracy. And what I'm really concerned about is campaign finance reform, especially Chair Goss, you remember Zone 1 last time, we, four, four candidates, which I think is a good testament to democracy, but just for one seat, it was a $70,000 campaign. And that's a school district unpaid. And the largest contributions were special interest PACs. And really, so we're looking at outside interests, right-to-life against Stanford children, you know, buying their way into our community. And it'd be great if you could address that. So a few other things we've been doing, or I've been doing, is attending the Joint Committee for Student Success. We've been about 10, 10 of those meetings, and I'm hearing some great stuff from legislature. I want to say, watch a few bills that are coming up. House Bill 2318, the Too Young to Test, which we wouldn't test anybody below second grade. HB 2192, the Middle Health Wellness Checks for sixth and 11th graders, I think. Should be interesting to see how that develops. HB 2516, prohibiting public money for virtual charter ads. Now, nothing I've brought to this group many times, and I'm glad to see that's action on it. It'd be great if you guys could support that, too. Senate Bill 282, limit screen time, and Senate Bill 283 to ban wireless in schools. Thanks. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions from the board or concerns? Thank you, Ross, very much. Last one, Sean. Help me. Ninos?
Nikos?
Nikos.
They might be, I think they might have left.
Okay. If I, if you have a name anywhere near to that name, we might be calling you. And if not, I'll assume that he went home. Thank you. And we're down to board activity reports. Does anyone have something they want to share that they've attended this week?
Yes and no. I want to invite everybody. This Friday starts McKay's Royal Scots Theater with their musical The Wiz. There'll be over 100 students involved as actors, techs, and musicians. The, the show runs this weekend and also in May, starting on the 26th. So I hope you will go and support our students at McKay.
Thank you. Director Leopold?
Sure. Right off the bat, I've been to one of McKay's plays, The Xanadu, last year. It was phenomenal. These kids are really talented, so I'm, I'm actually stoked that they're doing another one. A few things for me. One is, I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to a few schools. I've been working on something for a few years with Junior Achievement to teach financial literacy and education to kids, just because I feel like it can help get kids out of poverty. And so we have two elementary schools and a middle school already looking at doing one of their programs for free. I think that's super awesome. Secondly, I got to meet with SKEA and a lot of the, the staff to listen to, hear from teachers and House representative, House rep, to talk about education and some of the issues and problems resolving that, revolving around that. And lastly, I know you're all thinking, wow, Jesse, you're looking so good today. And let me tell you why.
Please do, Jesse.
Oh, thank you, Kathy. So today, I realized that I was a long, scraggly mess. Apparently, my, my barber wasn't doing a good enough job, and so I decided that I wanted a high-quality, flawless, amazing, done, it looks as if it was done by an angel, a haircut from one of our C-Tech students. And I just want to let you say, they did a pretty good job. So I just want to say, don't be afraid to try it out. I just, quick shout-out to those kids, they do a really great job. And to Maria, who cut my hair. So, thank you.
Thank you, Maria and Jesse. Last, superintendent's report.
I don't have anything to top that. Jesse, sorry. I have not got my haircut, but I've gotten a facial out there and a, and a manicure. So yes, you do want to try it out. There's options. The only thing I want to remind you of is that tomorrow night is McKay's Speak-Up Event in Preventing Teen Suicide. Remember, we're having one at every high school, every feeder system in the district. So tomorrow night is McKay, starting, I think, at 5 o'clock with dinner. So if we could have a board member attend, that would be awesome. Thank you again for all that you do every day, not just in the month of January. Your leadership is much appreciated.
And my last comment before we adjourn is, again, thank you to every single person that took the time, made the effort to support their children, and come to the board meeting. You're very much appreciated, and we applaud you. Good night. We are adjourned.